Yeah, I remember that whole conversation.
Okay.
Call the meeting to order for those who care to, please arise for an open reprimand sweep or reply. If you would, Mayor Heswick. Dear my father, thank you for staying, thank you for the time we could spend together. Thank you for allowing us to represent this city, thank you for the citizens, and thank you for the progress that we've made, allow us to make decisions you want us to make. And Jesus, amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to my land, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're gonna cover a couple of different items tonight. First of all, March 11th. Hold any significant date for you, Gail? March 11th? Does March 11th hold any significant date for you?
Oh, yes.
It's your birthday, so here's a thank you token of our appreciation. We appreciate what you do. And I do actually know how old you are, and I know when you graduated high school, but I'm not gonna say it.
It ends with a V.
Yes, it does. Do you graduate or are you eight? So, happy birthday, Gail, we appreciate it. Also, tonight, we have had plenty of information. We started a process a few years, several years ago in 2012 to put together a unified development code, and UDC is going to be before P&amp;Z. However, we're going to pull that back. We've had plenty of information out there, and what we realized is we've got some categories that we need to take a look at specifically, so we are pulling the UDC back off of our P&amp;Z agenda for next week that you're the liaison on. Just to give you a heads up, we do not have a date when it will come back, but we do have a date that, we do have a date in mind that we'd like to hit, but we gotta go over a few things before we get there. So I'm just kinda giving you that heads up now, Mr. Wilson. We do have, there's plenty of meetings, I'm gonna take a look at that. We will have some things on that in the future, just wanted to give you guys a heads up.
But it's not March 2030 now?
No, that is correct. Yes, I'm gonna...
That's probably indefinitely?
Uh, yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
That is correct, you're welcome. Also, let's see, anything else? Mr. Christy is not here tonight, he is tending to some personal matters, so we'll get to that a little bit later. Let's see. What do you think on that?
I don't know anything on that.
Okay. Fantastic. So I'll just close that, because it's gonna be postponed a little bit. Okay, fantastic. So I'm gonna remove the public hearing on that particular item. Okay. Well, the next item on the agenda, I'd like to open a public hearing concerning an order to the City Council of the City Republic of Missouri vacating a portion of right-of-way adjacent to 200 East State Highway 174 and located in the L.E. Cox subdivision in the City Republic Green County, Missouri. Welcome, Mr. Tyson, give us the overview, sir.
This bill will vacate a relatively small portion of Pine Street right-of-way from the point at which Pine, North Pine Street pavement ends and where the state right-of-way for State Highway 174 begins. It's approximately 4,358 square feet of right-of-way at that location that currently contains no public street nor any public utilities.
Thank you, sir. Anyone wishing to speak for this particular public hearing, please step forward, state your name, sign in, give us your best three minutes. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against this particular public hearing, please step forward, state your name, sign in, give us your best three minutes. Looks like Sarah and Tim, so we're good. Seeing none, public hearing closed. Like to open it up to citizen participation, anyone wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name, sign in, give us your best three minutes. Seeing none, public, or citizen participation closed. Like to have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Say one abstention, motion carries, 5-0-1. On the financial report, welcome, Mr. O'Donnell, please give us an overview, sir.
My gracious good evening to all. I trust everyone received their respective copies, whether by email or by paper. If you haven't, please let me know. Also, what I'm also looking at as we're going forward, since financial reports can always change from time to time, and I'm not talking about the numbers, I'm talking about the presentation, I'm looking at in terms of the recap of year-to-date revenue expense. I think we're gonna expand that and show this year-to-date versus last year-to-date to give the council a better overview as to comparison, comparing apples to apples, just as in, for instance, in comparing the two months of this year to the same two months of last year, we were at $3,358 in revenues versus $3,209, and net revenues over expenditures this year is $1,530 versus $1,272, just as an example. So we're gonna expand on that a little bit. I also want to, once again, poll the, poll the council as to what they wanna see going forward, because I know for the past couple of years, in looking back at financial packages, that is pretty much the same thing, and my only question is, are you happy with what you've got, or would you like to see more, or would you like to see less? So I would like to hear some feedback, so we can tailor this to what you want in order to make management decisions. So that's pretty much the extent of my remarks, so I'll entertain any questions.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. O'Donnell on the financial report. Mr. Clinkinberry?
Would you like us to run those suggestions through Jim to him, or can we send those directly to Mr. O'Donnell?
Uh, actually, I'd like to, since counsel, run them through Brendan, Brendan will collect at the end of the week. I don't know, pack it. That way, he's not bombarded with ten, eight, 10 emails.
Thank you.
Taking the fun out of it.
Well... He's been here long enough.
The questions, any additional questions, comments, discussion for Mr. O'Donnell on the financial report. Seeing none, need a motion to approve financial report?
Motion.
Second. Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you, sir. For some staff, Mr. Derrickson, anything, sir?
No.
Fantastic. Ah, Mr. Keeling's not here, he left a longer laundry list, as always, but future community events, these are very important, we have a lot going on in the City Republic, so. Now through March 13th, the Republic Aquatic Center, early bird season pass, I contacted Republic Community Center for details. Also through the 13th, is registration for spring adult softball, co-ed, and men's leagues are available. And February 26th through April 2nd, toddler tunneling, 5:30 or 6:30 for ages 2 through 5, pre-registration is required at the Republic Community Center. March 2nd, 16, 23rd, and 30th, toddler open gym at 10:00 a.m. for ages 0 to 5, no registration is required, but it does have a cost of $2 per toddler. March 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th, and 13th, schools out program, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., through 6 through 12, pre-registration is required. March 13th through April 3rd, Todd Academy, 9:15 or 10:30 for ages 2 to 5, pre-registration is required at the Community Center. March 6th through April 3rd is registration for youth boys baseball, season begins May 11th, contact Republic Community Center for details. Also, March 16th through April 3rd is registration for youth girls softball, also beginning on May 11th. And March 16th through April 3rd is registration for toddler top ball, that's co-ed, season begins May 11th, along with the other items. March 17th through May 7th is Art of Throides Foundation Exercise Program, Tuesdays and Thursdays at 1:30 p.m. That's a free event, and it is at the Republic Community Center. March 24th through May 21st is Okinawan Karate Class, Tuesdays and Thursdays at 6:30 p.m. for ages 6. Pre-registration is required. March 26th, Senior Movie Day, 3:00 p.m., this is a free event, do not have a movie on that, but Mr. Harder, I'm sure if you wanted to go over and pick one out for them, they'd probably enjoy that.
Secretary.
Deal. March 28th, Easter Egg Hunt, ages 0 to 12, activities begin at 10:00, and no registration is necessary, and that's a free event at JR Martin Park. Board Commissions and Committees Schedule, Board of Adjustments, April 2nd, Capitol Improvements, March 25th, City Council is March 23rd and April 13th, so if you notice, there is quite a bit of gap between those two council meetings. Nothing on old business. Like to have a motion, have the first reading of Bill number 15-06?
Motion.
Oh.
That's the one you're table on.
Yes.
Do you need a motion to do that, or can you pull it?
No. We're gonna pull it.
Yeah. Bill number 15-06 has been pulled, okay, let me make sure I got that one, too. Okay, fantastic. Mr. Garrett Tyson's already ahead of us. What's your typical, right ahead? He's already, he's already all over. Like to have a motion, have the first reading of Bill number 15-07?
Motion.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries? An order to the City Council of the City Republic of Missouri vacating a portion of right-of-way adjacent to 200 East State Highway 174 and located in the L.E. Cox subdivision in the City Republic Green County, Missouri. Welcome, Mr. Tyson, give us the overview, sir.
I still not found a good way to verbally describe the location, so I just refer everyone to the map exhibit, to see the location of the right-of-way being vacated. I should have been more clear in my earlier concerning, I said there were no public utilities. There are no municipally-owned utilities there, there is an AT&amp;T utility line that crosses through this property, and for that reason, this bill will reserve a 15-feet-wide general utility easement that will cover that AT&amp;T line. Staff has recommended approval of this bill. There are no plans to extend Pine Street to connect to State Highway 174, it is not included within the city's transportation plan to do so, and the city staff does not, would not recommend to do so, and we believe that MoDOT would prefer that it not happen as well.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Tyson. Mr. Garrett, would you also give us the P&amp;Z results of that?
Yes, P&amp;Z voted four to zero to recommend approval of this bill.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, discussion. Morse code for questions, comments, discussion. Anything at all? John just shakes his head, nothing to add. Anything at all? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Whoop.
No. No, we've already done that, we're just moving on.
Oh, never mind, move on, yeah.
I'm ready to vote.
Moving on then?
I was moving on, all right, we'll move on, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tyson. Thank you, Mr. Derrickson, for keeping me on track. On to other business, Resolution number 15-R-13, Resolution of the City Council of the City Republic of Missouri, warrant a bid for the Hydronic Coal Planer and authorizing the purchase thereof. Need a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Brock, welcome, give us the overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. This is part of our 2015 budget execution, and we're requesting permission to purchase a coal planer, which really is a milling attachment for our skid steer. We followed a sealed bid process, and we received three bids. One bid was a company, Rental Supply, submitted a bid on a model that didn't meet our minimum standards for both the weight of the unit and the side shift, how far the unit could be moved from side to side. So if we go to the low bid for equipment that did meet our standards, we're recommending authorization to award bid to a Fabic Cat for a Cat PC 305B model, cost of $14,772.36. Right now, we rent this equipment, in 2014, we spent $47.50, and the use is really limited just because of the cost of that rim equipment, so we think with a 20-year useful life, that this is money well spent for, for a street department.
Thanks, sir, it has a warranty?
It does, indeed, one-year warranty. Fabic Cat is an authorized warranty station.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock? Mr. Harder?
Hey, the Cat is mobile, too, is that correct?
Springfield.
Springfield, so if you have a problem, just take it there.
Yes, sir.
Additional questions, comments, discussion? Anything at all? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Seeing none, any abstentions? Motion carries, 6-0, thank you, sir. On the next item, Resolution number 15-R-14, Resolution of the City Council of the City Republic of Missouri, warrant a bid and authorize it to purchase two rescue chainsaws and related equipment, and authorizing disposal of two surplus saws. Like to have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion in a second, welcome Chief Compton, give us the overview, sir.
Earlier, we had tested a couple different rescue chainsaws out there, and we went in with a cooperative purchase with the Nixa and the Stratford Fire Protection Districts, and had bid out a steel MS461 rescue saw. We tested those, and that was probably the best fit for our needs, and had the best warranty overall. There are 12 steel vendors locally in the Green, Christian, Lawrence County area, and we sent bids to all of those, as well as advertised publicly in the monitor, and had three vendors respond back. The lowest vendor that met the bid specs is S&amp;H Farm Supply over at Rogersville, and we'll pick up two saws, a optional depth limiter on each saw, and what that depth limiter does, the saw has a 20-inch bar on it, it allows them, if they're sawing a roof open on a house, they can set the saw to cut it at inch, inch and a half depth, versus cutting the rafter, too, that they're standing on. So it's kind of a safety deal, and one spare chain. The bid price was $2,654.18. If you look at the bid tab here on, I'm not too sure what page that is of yours, but the saw we're buying is the one that, the second one down, does not have a wraparound handle. And so that the City Council knows what I'm talking about, the old saws that we're disposing of, you can see where these handles come around one side and stop. The wraparound handle will have the equal amount on each side, so you can't lay the saw flat and cut against a flat surface like here. If it has a wraparound handle, we lose about three and a half to four inches. That's what we have typically run for a number of years, and that's what we, staff, I kind told them, I said, "What do you want?", I said, "The difference of about 40 bucks in price", I said, "You know, let me know", and that's what they wanted to go back with. So that was kind of their decision. In addition to buying the two new saws, we also advertise to dispose of the older two saws that are in the photographs attached to the back here. The orange saw is approximately 21-years-old, the silver saw is approximately 20, and the low bidder for that was a gentleman by the name of Keith Thornton. And for the record, Mr. Thornton does not work for the City Republic, nor does he know anybody here, he's employed by Nixa Hardware, who also bid on this project and works in the small engine shop, and has a side business of doing repairs out of his house, and he likes to echo saws. So with your approval, we'll purchase two new saws and sell the other two for the $234.
Questions, comments, discussion, Chief Compton? Mr. Harder?
We've all heard horror stories of selling stuff to the public and it coming back on us later, how does that, how does that affect you? We sell this, it's out of our hands, forever and everywhere.
The language, because we sold a couple of fire trucks, and Mr. Derrickson helped me write the bid spec.
All right.
And it says, "As is, where is, and it's all yours."
So it doesn't come back to haunt us?
No give-backs.
To be, to be...
Get back.
Yeah, there's no give-backs. And for the record, we did not bend the bar on any of that, it was made that way, so. The saws are running, they're actually on the first, the two new engines that we brought, they're running right now. They're just, the orange saw, we've had a tremendous amount of problems with, and the $234 is coming close to covering the repair bill on it from last year. They, they're at the age, when I took them last, took the orange one to get it repaired last time, when I took it to Carpenter's Saw Shop, they fixed it, and their quote was, "Don't bring this back. You can't get parts for it." And so, he knows what he's getting. I mean, he's seen the photographs, and the bid spec that was sent out, the photographs that you have is what he got.
Okay. So... Do we have a warranty on these, too?
Standard steel warranty's 90 days, we requested in the bid spec that it be one year because of how we operate it, may ride around in a compartment of a fire truck for 30 days before we actually, I mean, we'll use it, test it, but you know what I'm saying, to put it through its paces. And the three vendors all stepped up to the plate and extended the warranty.
Thank you. Do we have a contract for sharpening the blades?
Have to be diamond-sharpened.
Right.
Uh, Nixa Hardware, Ozark Power Center up on Chestnut, and I think Carpenter's Saw Shop has, the three people have the diamond, currently have the diamond wheel to sharpen it. So, no, we don't have a contract to have it sharpened, it's my understanding, talking to the steel dealer, the company rep, we're gonna have about $20 to sharpen the chain over a standard chain.
Okay.
So, that answers my question, thank you.
Mr. Clinkinberry?
On that wraparound handle, there isn't anything involving safety or other reasons why you would wanna have that particular model?
No.
It's just how they decided to build them?
That is, oddly enough, the standard handle is what comes standard on a standard chainsaw. The wraparound handle, they put on the rescue saw, so they're having to, when they build these, they'll retrofit it with the standard handle that's sold every day of the week. It's just a matter of preference, how you like the saw, and we've had instances where we've had to have that tight up against something to cut, and if you lose that three and a half to four inches, then you're, you know, you may not be able to get that saw in there to cut it. The new saw will have a 20-inch bar, which will help, because you can see the bar on these old ones here, they're relative, like, 14 inches usable.
Okay. So you're gonna gain the three plus the extra?
Yes.
I'm good, thank you. Additional questions, comments, discussion for Chief Compton?
Money from the sale of the old saw goes into the reserved account for the fire department.
Thank you. Thank you. Additional questions, comments, discussion? Did you say when they were available?
Right. Order will be placed tomorrow, we're thinking about 45 days till delivery, because they will build these at the steel plants located on the east coast, West Virginia? No, somewhere over there. So, maybe it's in the Carolinas.
Uh, that would be on the east coast.
Yeah, no, I kind of thought that, but it's over that direction.
I wasn't gonna say that.
Go ahead, I'm waiting for you.
No.
You have picked on me all night.
I'm good.
Well, I was gonna ask, did you get that from the old saw, or?
No, I had, no, I had skin cancer, and I paid 50 bucks for that so far.
Well, that saw, we're gonna ruin it, we need to take one off the top.
That's what happens when you hit old, your body falls apart.
Is that what it is?
Any other?
Yeah. Any special training in that, or is it just kind of the same?
Just kind of the same old stuff. Yeah, we will, we have a homemade prop, and we'll go out there and cut, and make sure everybody knows how to use it and so on, but it's pretty much what we've been doing so far.
Additional questions, comments, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you, Chief. On the next item, Resolution number 15-R-15, a resolution of the City Council of the City Republic of Missouri, authorizing payment to Missouri Rural Services Workers Compensation Insurance Trust for coverage for 2015 slash 2016. Would like to have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion in a second, welcome, Mr. Heatherly, please give us an overview.
Okay. And the city workers' compensation insurance policy expires on the 31st of March, the renewal policy is for April 1st, 2015 through March 30th, 2016. The renewal premium for Missouri Rural Services Work Comp Insurance Trust for 2015-15 is $154,397, which represents an increase of 5.5% over the renewal premium of 2014-15. Below, you will see there the comparisons for 2015 to 2016 to 2014-15. Touch on two things, the manual premium, that's based on payroll and classification rates, we're classified by industry code, and we're assigned a rate by that code, and they're subject to change, and they can affect the overall premium. The modified premium is based on our modification factor, our modification factor went from a .93 to a .95, the industry average is 1.0. Our slight increase is due to the claims and the reserves of outstanding claims that we have on the books at this time, and the three years of loss experience, they look at three years' loss experience when they give us that mod factor. In addition to that, a workers' compensation audit is performed annually to review our payroll records. The annual premium then is paid in two parts, and the current estimate as provided is $154,397, and then we will be invoiced for the remainder. So if they've invoiced it that, we'll have an audit, and then we'll see how we come out after the audit. Last year, we received a refund of $9,598 after our audit. That was after going back through and reclassifying some workers that had been misclassified, et cetera. And we received our quote through AJ Gallagher, and they found that Missouri Rural is still very competitive in the marketplace, and after reviewing quotes and comparisons, felt that they gave us the best protection at the most competitive cost. We do still have a large dividend that will be available for future credits on future renewals when we go down the road, so we ask that the workers' compensation coverage from Missouri Rural Services for 2015 in the amount of $154,397 be put in place.
Thank you. How are we tracking overall as recordable case rate or payout workers' compensation over the last three years? Are we getting better, getting worse? This shows an increase.
We are increasing the claims.
Okay.
It's going to help with the replacement of the gate, come back.
Good question.
And we do now have in place through our current insurance carrier NPR videos that all workers in specific to areas are now having to go through that training to show better safety habits, procedures, et cetera, to help within that safety zone, to help us have less accidents.
Good question. Additional questions, comments, discussion, Mr. Clinkinberry?
Do we have anybody on staff that's gonna go through, like Ms. James did last year, and re-audite or classify people again, or anything gets fairly clean since we did it last year, and you only see that every few years?
The big thing that brought that up last year is we had some missing employees on there, and they were misclassified, so when we can't provide those salaries, then we have to make up for that. So with that, and her and I working very closely together this year, we shouldn't have that problem. But her and I will sit with the auditor, as we always do, and go through and provide all information, and make sure each classification is correct.
Is it also based on, the audit's based on actual payroll, where they do their premium on projected payroll?
Correct.
So part of that could be, you know, that they would overshoot a little bit on projecting our payroll increases or whatever, or we didn't have a finance person for a while, things like that could affect it as well, correct?
Correct. And when we give them those payroll records, that's what they do, they take it as actual payroll and compare it to what they have projected, and the difference is either billed or refunded.
You hope they always project a little high, so you get rid of it.
Thank you. Good question. Additional questions, comments, discussion? Anything at all? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions?
Motion carries, 6-0, thank you very much. Like that concludes the open session portion, would like to go into executive session under RSMO 610.021.1, RSMO 610.021.2, and RSMO 0610.021.3. Would I like to have a motion?
You got a motion.
I got a motion. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Paul? Councilmember Harder?
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Brishers?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember, member Clinkinbeard?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries, six, zero. Uh, the open portion session of this meeting is adjourned. We will take a five-minute recess. Thank you. Okay. Can you hit the number of that?